Okay.
I can't.
Let me know when we're all live.
We're good.
We're good.
We're good.
Okay, very good. Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Yama Zoni Board of Appeals. Today's date is May 23rd, 2024. My name is Sean Igo. I'm the vice chairman. We have four matters on our petition tonight. The first matter is petition 5090, Sand Dollar Customs. Are they present currently?
No.
They are not. Then we are going to move on to the second petition. Our second petition is petition.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, Steve from Sand Dollar. How are you?
He's online, I guess.
Oh, Steve, are you zooming in tonight?
Yeah, I got caught up in this something going on with 28 shut down. I'm about gonna be about five minutes late.
That's okay. Hey, well, we'll take the next one and we'll catch up with you when you get here.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Steve.
I think wastewater is still working on 28, so the wastewater.
Okay. All right. The next petition is petition 5108, Pearlene Dawkins. Property is located at 258 Higgins Crawl Road in West Yarmouth. They're in an R40 zoning district as well as the APD. The applicant seeks to reverse the decision of the building commissioner and/or a variance section 202.5 to allow an F3 use in a residential zone for commercial delivery truck parking.
She's on her way to the table now.
Yep.
Okay.
With the microphone? Yep, there you go.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Tell us who you are and.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Pearlene Dawkins.
Okay, and you are the petitioner tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't you tell us a little bit about your wealth? Actually, you're here asking us to reverse the decision of the building commissioner?
Yes, but.
Okay, hold on just a minute more. Let's talk about what the actual violation is here. Okay. Oh, what you're trying to reverse, should I say? I have in front of me a zoning violation notice addressed to Pearlene Dawkins of 258 Higgins Crawl Road, West Yarmouth, Mass. It's dated April 2nd, 2024. Dear Pearlene Dawkins, this letter constitutes an official notice of zoning violation. Town of Yarmouth Building Department received a complaint that you are operating a business from your home.
You lost them.
Oops.
Zone.
Should I assist?
I'm sorry, ma'am. I need to read this into the record.
Sean, you just you broke out just before there appears to be three commercial delivery trucks. Sorry, you went silent.
Oh, I see, okay. There you can hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, there appears to be three commercial delivery trucks parked at your residences. Your property is listed in the R40 zone, which is a residential zone. This type of use, which would be classified in the Town of Yarmouth zoning bylaw 202.5 Use Regulation Table as F3 Trucking and Warehousing, is not allowed in a residential zoning. 202.5 application, no building or structure shall be erected and no premises shall be used except as set forth in the Use Regulation Schedule or in other sections of this bylaw. If a use is not specifically allowed by right or special permit, it shall be considered to be not allowed unless an appeal is taken under section 102.2.3 and it is shown beyond a reasonable doubt to be of similar nature and at least no more noxious nor detrimental to the welfare of the neighborhood that specifically allowed use. You are hereby ordered to abate and/or correct said violation or seek relief from the zoning board of appeals as allowed by Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48, Section 7 and Section 15. You are required to respond within seven days of receiving this letter. You also have the right to appeal this decision to the zoning board of appeals within 30 days of this letter. You are required to respond within seven days. Questions regarding this matter may be directed to this department. Very truly, Brad Inkley, local inspector, Town of Yarmouth. Ma'am, that letter was sent to you on April 2nd, 2024. Did you receive that letter?
Yes, I received the letter, but to be honest, I was naive. I didn't know a truck couldn't park there. I was helping someone. I said, it's okay.
Just speak into the microphone.
What I'm saying, I was naive to what's going on. I didn't know a truck couldn't be parked there. The person said, can you park? I said, yes, I have ample space at home, but I was naive to all these rules. I didn't know anything about it, to be honest. So I thought I was doing good.
Okay, okay. Are the trucks still parked there right now?
Yes. One is parked, two of them is parked, one on the other side and one at the front. Two is parked, you know? One at the front and one at the side. But the one on the side, they don't really use. It's not been on the road.
But you do admit that you are parking those trucks on your property?
Yes, I do admit it, but I was not, I didn't know about the rules and regulation. I was naive to it. I was telling the lady when I came, I said, I'm really sorry, I didn't know anything that I didn't know it would be a problem. I thought I was doing good by helping someone. Said, it's okay to park there, but I didn't know. I'm being honest, I was naive.
No, 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 that's very, we certainly want you to be and we understand, we hear what you're saying. Now, you have filed an application for us to reverse the decision of the building inspector or the local inspector, zoning inspector. Tell us why you think we should do that.
The only reason is I just, I was just trying to help, as I said, and I didn't know it was a problem for the truck just to be parked there. But you have to make the decision. I didn't know there was a, it's a problem.
Okay, all right, okay. We're gonna go to some questions right now. Do you have anything else you'd like to add at this time? Ma'am, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Not really, but I was just trying to help, as I said. I was naive to all what's going on. I didn't know the rule and regulation of the town.
Sean, she's also asking if she doesn't reverse it, the variance, are we gonna do that separately? Is that how you want to do that or?
I'm sorry, Jay.
There, she's also asking for a variance, I think if we don't overturn the, do you want to do that separately?
Yes.
Okay.
Right now, we're gonna address the decision of the inspector. So we're gonna go to the questions from the board. Jay, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
No, I, it's not an allowed use in a residential area, so I don't really have any questions.
Okay. How about you, Tim? Do you have any questions?
No, I stand with Jay. It's not allowed. I think it's been there, it's been going on for quite a while, I think.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Years, 20 years. That house there, I think it's on the, if it's the one I'm thinking about, I know there's been a truck over there for 20 years.
No, I'm not living there 20 years.
Okay.
So, but no, I'm all set.
You're naive to it, that's it.
Barbara, do you have any questions?
No, I drove by the other day and yeah, there were two trucks there, so. So I don't have any questions.
Okay. You have two letters that we received, I will read them into the record. Letters in my position. I am writing to oppose the allowance of commercial delivery truck parking in residential zones. Excuse me, this is from Linda Galkowski of 14 Lavender Lane, West Yarmouth. I am writing to oppose the allowance of commercial delivery truck parking in a residential zone. Catch, please find photos of the box trucks back end to end on Lavender Lane transferring cargo. This reduces Lavender Lane to one lane and creates a dangerous situation for vehicles trying to enter or depart Lavender Lane. Pending completion of the bicycle path extension, there will be increased bicycle and pedestrian traffic in the area, increasing the risk of injury. Not allowed commercial delivery truck parking in our residential neighborhood. That's from Linda.
Excuse me, can I interrupt? The truck's on that mine.
I'm sorry, ma'am, I'm reading these in the record. I'll be right back.
Let him read these in first.
The second letter is from David Cox and Leslie Johnson. 19 Lavender Lane, West Yarmouth. We are writing to the zoning board to object to the request of petition 5108 from Dawkins at 258 Higgins Crawl Road, seek to reverse flash variance from 202.5, that's section 202.5, to allow F3 residential zone for commercial delivery parking. Existing conditions, existing driving conditions have been extremely hazardous and two flash box trucks are backed up, backed up, back to back on the corner of Lavender Lane while transferring cargo from one truck to another. Trying to exit our street requires us to go on the opposite side of the road, subjecting ourselves to another vehicle coming around the corner, possibly causing an head-on collision. We respectfully ask that the variance request change for Pearlene Dawkins be denied for public safety. Cerely David Cox and Leslie Johnson. That's all I have for correspondence. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? If so, please come to the microphone.
That one right there.
My name is Mark Dignan. I live at 264 Higgins Crawl Road. I'm right next door. And the big truck, the 26,000 pound G V W is parked right there. And like he said, the two of them are basically storage and other trucks come and unload them and everything else. And sometimes they start the trucks up and run them for two, three, four hours to charge the batteries. Trucks have more than one battery. And yeah, I don't, it's a residential neighborhood and it's not gonna positively affect anybody trying to sell their house. It'll hit the real estate value. The people that live there, I have no problem with them. They're very quiet. I don't, it's just the trucks. I don't know, I talked to other neighbors, they didn't want to come to this meeting, but none of them were positive things to say about the trucks being there.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to this petition?
None seen.
Seeing none. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Please come to the microphone.
Seeing none.
Seeing none. Ma'am, is there anything that you would like to add?
No, what's happened is not my trucks, they're not my name. I was just trying to help someone.
I have a question for you. Are those trucks being loaded and unloaded?
Well, they have barrels, they're empty barrels, that's all they put there. They go to New York with them. Yeah, they're drums, that's what I said, it's drums. Yeah, it's just empty drums in the thing. I'm being honest with you. They're not under my name. They're not mine.
I think it's nice that you want to help them, but it's not allowed. That's the problem.
What I was saying, I was naive, I told the lady, I don't remember, Fallon? Yeah, I told her, I'm really sorry, I was naive to it.
Okay, ma'am, is there anything else you'd like to add at this time?
Nothing else, I just have to accept what you guys said, it's just rule and regulation. I'm an humble person. I'm always trying to help someone, but I didn't know I was doing the wrong thing. I'm really sorry.
That's okay, no problem. Okay, we're gonna close the meeting to the public, open it for board discussion. Would like to begin a discussion on this matter. Jay, what are your thoughts on this?
Well, I mean, it's a residential neighborhood, it's one of the things we don't want to have in a residential neighborhood, so I really don't think we can change the, I think what the building commissioner had put in was proper. It's definitely a violation, so I would definitely uphold that. You know, if you don't want to talk, I guess we don't want to talk about a variance right now, but I would be against that also.
Okay. Barbara, your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, it's clearly a violation in a residential zone. The trucks are huge, so I wouldn't be in support of it at all.
Okay. And Tim, your thoughts?
Yeah, I agree. I've personally seen trucks backed up to each other. I lived down the road from there, so this has been going on for many, many years. So it's definitely a violation.
Okay. I am in agreement with the board as well. I think it's a clear violation. I think this admission by the petitioner, I think we heard from concerned residents that there is commercial activity going on on the property, so it's not just the storing of trucks. It seems to be commercial activity, loading and unloading of commercial trucks at the residence. So I would also support upholding the decision of the building commissioner in this matter. Is anybody prepared to make a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to uphold the ruling of the building commissioner.
Okay, do we have a second to that?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of, all those in favor of upholding the decision of the building commissioner, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries four to nothing. The decision of the building commissioner is upheld. Now have a request for variance. Ma'am, you requested a variance in this matter. Could you please tell the board how you qualify and meet the criteria for a variance under the Yama zoning bylaw?
Well, now that I know, I don't see where I'm qualified, but I was naive to it before.
Okay.
Yes, for the rules and regulation that you guys just said, I, within myself, I wouldn't be qualified, but I thought I could appeal, because I was naive to all what's going on.
Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
Not really, I can't even think right now, because I just, I just have to let them know to find a parking space for themselves. I don't know if anybody nearby in the neighborhood, parking.
And you don't, you don't own those trucks, is that correct?
What did you say?
Do you own those trucks?
I'm not the owner of the trucks.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, not yet.
Okay. We're gonna close the, that hearing on the variance to the public, open it up for board discussion. Anyone prepared to discuss this matter or make a motion?
I think it's, I don't think it's worthy of a variance. It does cause a nuisance to the neighborhood, et cetera, so to me, it's something that we can't, I can't approve, so I'd be glad to make a motion to, I can, should I make a motion not to approve it or make a motion to approve it?
You can, to keep it simple, you can make a motion to deny the variance, if that's your intention.
I'd like to make a motion to deny the variance request, as requested.
So a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Any discussion on the motion? I will chime in on this. In order to meet the criteria for a variance, there must be a hardship. There is no hardship here to the petitioner, because she doesn't even own the trucks, so she's allowing a third party. The hardship must be owing to circumstances surrounding the shape, topography, or soil conditions of the property. That is not, that is not the case in this. And by granting relief, we cannot derogate from the purpose and intent of the bylaw. I think if we were to grant variance in this matter, we'd clearly be derogating from the purpose and intent of the bylaw. So I do not believe that the petitioner meets the criterias for a variance. I would recommend the board deny it, vote to deny it. Any further discussion on the motion before we take a vote? All those in favor to approve the variance signify by saying aye. Hearing none, all those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Nay. That carries zero in favor, four against. The variance does not carry. Thank you very much, ma'am. You'll, we will write the decisions and file them with the clerk.
Okay, thank you.
We will tell you though, we must tell you though, did not get your relief and you are in violation of the zoning. As such, ma'am, as such, the town, should they choose to enforce this, could fine you up to $300 per day for each violation. So you can contact the building department if you have any questions, but I would suggest to you that you're going to have to remove those trucks from your property right away to avoid any fines.
Sure, I will. I will let them know what's going on. I'm really sorry about all this.
Thank you very much for coming by.
Yeah, you're welcome, but I'm so sorry about it.
No, 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 that's okay. No, that's okay, don't worry about a thing, everything's fine.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Have a nice night, ma'am.
You too, have a nice day.
Thank you.
All right, the next matter is petition 5110, CMP Realty Trust, Murray and Carol Phelps, trustees. The property location is 301 West Yarmouth Road, West Yarmouth, Mass. It's in an R40 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit per her 407.5.2, number three, to convert an affordable accessory apartment into a rental accessory apartment. Are the petitioners present?
Yes.
Good evening, how are you tonight, folks?
Doing well.
Could you please identify yourselves for the record?
And the address.
Carol Phelps, 301 West Yarmouth Road in West Yarmouth.
Murray Phelps, 301 West Yarmouth Road.
Thank you.
And are you the owners of the property?
Yes.
Okay, can you, so you want to convert from an affordable to a non-affordable accessory apartment, correct?
That's correct.
And have you been renting this as an affordable accessory apartment in the past?
Yes, we have.
And have you complied with all the regulations?
We have.
Thus far?
Yes, we have.
Okay. Okay. And I'll tell you what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna, is there anything you'd like to add or would you like just the board to ask questions?
No, it's just an existing apartment, that one bedroom, and we'd like to have it converted to a new.
Okay. And we have to switch, what did you on this one?
I'm looking.
Be on a floor plan?
I don't really need a floor, I don't really need. You submitted a floor plan like this? I know, it's really a conversion, you already have it, so I trust that we have that in our file and Dolores may not have put that, it's not in mine.
It's 646 square feet, Sean. There is a floor, there is a floor plan in our package.
I got one right in front of me right here, Jay, that's okay, great.
Yep.
And so is it your intention to rent this, what, on a yearly basis?
Yes, yearly, we do not do any short term at all.
Okay. I'm gonna go to the board and see if they have any questions. Barbara, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
No, not at this point.
All right. How about you, Tim?
No, not at this minute.
Jay?
Just to clarify, it's a garage downstairs, is that what it is? So it's not heated, not heated or lived in downstairs, and this is the second floor of a garage, used as an apartment, pretty much.
Just the top floor.
Yep.
Is the apartment, yep.
No, I don't have any other questions, Sean, that's it.
Okay, all right. I really don't have any questions. This bylaw is, as many of you know, new to us, so we will probably see many of these come for us in the future. So you, I think, are only the second one that we've seen thus far. But we definitely need the housing stock, so we're glad you're keeping it as a, as a rental. I'm gonna go, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Please come to the microphone. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Please come to the microphone. Seeing none. Do you have anything else you'd like to add at this time, folks?
No, just, it's been, it's been nice to have someone on the property.
Okay. That's a beautiful looking building, you did a nice job with that.
Thank you.
Well, we're gonna close the, we're gonna close petition to the public, open it up for board discussion. Anyone wish to begin a discussion or make a motion?
No, I just, I was looking through, you know, what we have for the new bylaw and the coverage, it looks to be fully covered. I think you have plenty of parking for two additional spaces. And, you know, we do have the ability to transfer these over from existing affordable over, so I'm comfortable with the request and be happy to make a motion to approve the, approve the petition as requested.
Okay, no conditions?
No conditions.
Oh, all right. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Barbara, second of the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Only thing that I would say is that the petitioner had previously met the conditions under the previous section, 407 section, and appeared to meet the conditions under the revised 407 section of the bylaw. As such, I feel that they meet the criteria for a special permit. We'll take a vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, four to nothing. Folks, there'll be a decision that will be drafted. It will then be filed with the town clerk. 20 days must elapse, that's a technical waiting period. After that time, you can come and pick up your special permit from our administrative assistant and take it over to the registry of deeds and record it and bring a copy back for our records. Do you have any questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a nice night.
Okay, thank you. Sean, just so you know, Sand Dollar Realty is here. Sand Dollar Customs, I'm sorry.
Is Steve here?
Yes, he is.
All right, we're gonna call that one next, I think. Recalling petition 5090. This is a reconsidered petition from March 14th, 2024, for Sand Dollar Customs. Property location is 1 Denise Lane, South Yarmouth, Mass. It's in an R40 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit per 104.3.2 subsection 2 and/or variance from section 203.5, a front setback relating to construct a 22 by 17 addition on a pre-existing non-conforming structure. Good evening.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Igo, how are you?
Very good, Steve. Would you identify yourself for the record?
Yes, my name is Steve Babola. I am representative from Sand Dollar Customs for the owners of 1 Denise Lane, Mr. King. As Mr. Igo described, we were looking to see if we could get a little bit of relief on the, what would be a front setback, because the home is on a corner lot on the Sharon roadside of the property. I just want to make sure that there's the board, do you guys have a copy, a stamped copy of the averaging method?
We do now, yes.
That was realized, okay. So in the averaging method, I believe we were able to obtain about 23.62 or something very similar to that number on the Sharon roadside. But the configuration of the 14 by 22 addition that the homeowners are seeking to add would bring us down to, I believe, 21.76. So we're seeing if we could get the board to grant us just a couple of feet.
Okay. I have a 22 by 17 addition. Is that what you're asking for? Because you said 14 just a minute ago.
It's, I believe it is 22 by 17, that's correct.
Okay. All right, so if we set back average, and in this case, it's a corner lot, just so we're all clear on what we're looking at here. We're going to take the average on the Sharon roadside, the house to the right of the home on Sharon, and the house to the left on Denise. So we'll go around the corner, and we set back average that house on Denise on the left hand side, which I'm looking at, and it's 29.34. And then we're gonna come around the corner and take. And then we're gonna come around the corner and take the house on Sharon Road, which is 17.95. Now, if we add those two together, 17.95 plus 29 point, excuse me, 17.95 plus 29.54, get a total of 47.49, we're gonna divide that by two, so if we average a setback, it comes out to 23.74, so you would have to be set back at least that. What are you set back with your addition?
I believe the, I don't have that plan directly in front of me, it is in the package, but I believe we were looking to get, I think it's 21.76.
20.76.
20.76.
Okay. So it appears you're still a bit shy on that side. Okay, and what is this room gonna be?
This is gonna be a family room, so as, you know, as you can tell by looking at the size of the home, it's a very small ranch, you know, newly purchased by the Kings and is looking to be a future retirement home, they have children, the expansion is, you know, somewhat modest. We did discuss with them, you know, the potential of going up. Candidly, Mr. King said if we wanted to go up, I would have bought a colonial. And honestly, he wasn't completely familiar with the zoning regulations, he thought there wouldn't be very much of an issue with just expanding the home a little bit. And, you know, part of this application is that, in looking for a 20.76, we figured it would be less detrimental when you compare the 17-foot-plus setback at the home next door on Sharon.
And so this is just gonna be a family room, there's gonna be no petitions, no plumbing, no cooking facilities?
There is a half bathroom where it attaches to the kitchen side, but that's it.
Do you have a plan, do you have a plan for this? Because I don't have one in my packet.
It was supplied in the original packet, the complete.
Floor plan, it's just a, just the.
Layout.
Topograph.
I mean, I have the elevation to show the exterior, do we have an interior layout?
I do not have a copy of the interior layout with me.
Well, you referenced there's gonna be a half bath, too, correct?
That's correct.
So you're adding a half bath?
But within that, correct, within that square footage. The main bathroom, or the only bathroom in the existing home, is down at the other end where the bathrooms, where the bedrooms are.
Yeah, okay.
So with that being a family room, it made sense to just have a vanity and a toilet.
What are the plans for the shed?
The shed has already been removed.
Removed. It's gone.
That was gone prior to our initial hearing.
Okay, okay. I'm going to go to the board for questions. Barbara, do you have questions for the petitioner?
I'm just concerned that it's such a small lot, you know, and it's gonna be close to the Sharon roadside. That's my concern.
Okay. Tim?
No, not at this moment.
I'm sorry?
No, no questions at this moment.
Okay. Jay, questions?
No, the biggest issue when we came before us last time was they talked about averaging, but we didn't have any documentation for it, which was a problem. This one is now looking for just three feet, or just a little bit less than three feet, but the one thing we did talk about last time was the deck, which is in the back, and I know that was an issue for some of the people on the board at the time.
Can I answer to that question? All right, so I had a sit-down with Mark Grills, the rebuilding of that deck was permitted by Tim Sears under Article 40, can you tell me what that is? Sean, I can't remember exactly what it was. Anyway, it was a pre-existing deck, and MGL allows that to be re-permitted for rebuilt.
So he's grandfathered.
Completely legal, yes.
That is correct, and I did get clarification from the building department, I inquired. For the record, I did make inquiry, and this matter was under reconsideration because I think the last time you were here, I don't think that, there may have been a misinterpretation in the record, so we reviewed it and wanted to bring you back, but it was brought to my attention that that is a grandfathered deck. So it's violated.
Okay, so other than the deck and the fact that we didn't have the documentation about the averaging, which is one of the things we needed, I don't have any questions, this looks like it's just requesting three feet beyond the average, so I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Well, I have a question, and why does it have to be 17 feet wide? Why can't it be, say, 14 feet wide, which is still a sizable room when you're going 22 length? That's a lot of square footage, that's over 300 square feet for a family room, that's pretty big, why do you need to come out 17?
So of that 22 feet, five feet of that is a clipped corner, and that's just simply a foyer entrance at that point, that now becomes the primary entrance, so it actually reduces that, you know, 22 foot down to, I believe, 17 by 14, which, if you look at the room, I'm sorry, if you look at the room size, it's a proportionate room size for a family room, especially when you have five people and potentially entertaining. When you take the square, 35 square feet out for the half bathroom as well, it reduces that family room capacity pretty significantly, and that's basically that overall explanation.
It'd be nice if we had a floor plan, just so we could see what's, you do have a, you know, what's basically, it's a small foyer right now, it'd be nice to know what this was used as and whether that could be cut down by a few feet to make room for this, because that's basically just kind of an open space. Is that an option?
Well, that was the, that was the whole intent, was that, so it would be a nice, large, open space, because the home itself is actually so small.
I mean, in the little bump out right now, what is that being used for?
Porch.
When you.
What's it gonna be used for?
The little bump out, what are you referring to?
On the, what is the actually side entrance right now? That little bump out to the.
That's just like, it's a roofed porch.
What's that gonna be used as in the future?
That's just gonna remain a porch, that's all they have.
So that could actually be reduced if it's just a porch, correct? That little bump out on the house?
There's house behind it, too.
Well, it currently has a roof line over it.
This is the part he's talking about.
No, I'm talking, oh, I'm talking about the main building itself, sorry.
What is right behind the porch?
Sorry, that's what I meant, sorry.
Is there a room right behind the porch?
That is the door entrance to the home, which is furthest to the right, if you're standing on the Denise Lane side, you have an entrance door at that right corner, directly, when you swing that door open, you're looking at the door for the basement stairwell, which goes straight down toward the backyard. Directly to the left, if you just stepped inside the door entrance and you turn to the left, is your dining room table and your kitchen.
They're using that bump out part of the building as their kitchen, somewhere.
There really is, there really is no.
It's hard to tell because we don't have a floor plan, so whether or not you need three feet, depending on what that room is being used for, that could be reduced to make up for this, yeah.
I just wanted to be clear that you're speaking about this area right here?
This area back here, not the porch, yeah, this area here.
Right, so that's the kitchen.
That is the kitchen.
That's the kitchen, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It's a very small, it's a very small ranch, very modest.
Yeah, like, just a floor plan would have helped significantly.
Understood, and, you know, you have, the thing is you have an elevation plan, and the floor layout was part of the overall packet with the elevation, so I'm not certain how that piece of paper didn't make it into the.
Jay, can you open that big folder that you have in front of you? Can you see if it's in there?
Which one is this, this is?
This is the 5090, which should probably be the first one that you're looking at on the top.
Okay, yeah, all right. Kind of logically, bear with me for a second.
So my secretary.
He must be watching.
We're gonna, we're gonna need to have that.
Sent us the floor plan.
We're not gonna be able to look at that on the phone.
We need a copy. There's nothing in the folder right now, Sean, it's a floor plan.
Steve, I think what we're gonna need is, we're gonna need to see a set of floor plans. Do you have a set of floor plans that are drawn, is that what you're showing on the board?
Yeah, most certainly, if there were a method, I could print it out right now, and.
Well, we don't seem to have that in any of our packets, nor do we have it in the master folder, so.
It was, you know, it was certainly one of the papers that was provided to the building department in order to get kicked over here, so.
Doesn't work.
Where it would have gone.
They don't pass everything over, so.
That's, I guess that's the problem.
Well, actually, they do, so let's, why don't we talk about the relief before we talk about the floor plan? Let's presume for purposes of discussion that we all agree with the floor plan.
There you go.
Is everybody? Hi.
I'll put Dick in this seat in just a second.
Who's this?
Who's this?
There you go. I'll bring you the packets.
Oh, it's Dick, Dick joining us, yes.
Come on in, Dick, nice to have you.
How are you?
Okay.
We're looking at many technical problems.
That's quite all right, Dick, quite all right. So getting back to, let's just say for purposes of discussion, that we all agree on the floor plan. Do we all agree with the relief that's requested as far as?
Not a technical glitch.
I'm sorry, but we need to go back to the board here. Could you mute your microphone for a second?
Dick, can you mute for a minute?
Yeah. Yeah.
I can still hear you.
That's not muted.
It's not muted, Dick, just so you know. He can't hear us. We're probably muted.
Okay, so before we, before we request the floor plan, let's talk about the relief that's requested, which is really the issue here, I think.
Yeah, I think, Sean, I believe they're kind of requesting a close to three feet beyond what would be the averaging request, and.
That's three feet beyond the setback average, that's correct.
Yes, and, you know, with the way the street runs and the neighborhood, I'm actually comfortable with that request, the extra three feet, so I'm not overly concerned about it, certainly we'd like to have it to the right amount, but I'm not overly concerned considering that the house next door is at 17, close to 18, and some of the other houses are pretty close, too, so it's fairly consistent with some of the other homes in the neighborhood, so I would be okay with it.
Okay, okay. Barbara, what do you think?
It's a really tight neighborhood in there, but it is just an additional three feet, so.
And Sean, I do think it's, I believe it's a special permit request, it's not an additional variance, is it correct?
It's a special permit request, yes, so go ahead, Barbara.
No, that's all.
Okay, Tim?
I'm mutual. I'll stay quiet for now.
Well, we'd like your opinion, we're getting ready to take a vote here, you're.
It's a little, it is a little, it is a little close, but again, I'm just gonna go along with what they said, it is, the neighborhood is tight, and there are some items, some houses that are closer, or, so.
Okay.
Is Dick in on this one? I'm not sure if he's.
I don't.
I do, I did hear everything, and I would concur with Jay at all there, that I don't think the three feet is too much to ask, it's gonna be a nice looking house, and those are, you know, those are all reasonably large homes on very small lots, and it's tough, especially on a, especially on a corner.
Yeah, okay, okay. I tend to agree myself, I think if you are gonna look down the street on the Sharon roadside, which is where you'd really look to see the most impact this would have, the house just to the right of it is only set back 18, 19 feet itself, so it's almost gonna line up with it, so it's gonna look in conformity, really, with that streetscape. They are only asking for a family room and a half bath, I would wanna put into this condition, though, that there'll be no future expansion, well, they can come back and ask for future expansion, but it would be, came back, I would be very reluctant to grant any more expansion of this particular piece of property, given the setbacks that they're already violating, because now we're giving them now permission to come into this front setback, they have a side setback on the Denise Lane side, where they're only 8.74 feet off of that one, they're supposed to be 20 in this zoning district, so there should be a note, I think, in the decision about reluctance to approve any future expansion of this property. But I do agree with the rest of the board, I think it is a fairly reasonable request, it is a small house, and it is a small lot, and they are on a corner, and they're tough to navigate with setbacks, as we all know, and we have given relief to front setbacks on corner lots previously, so I do think it's a reasonable request, and I plan on supporting it. Is there anybody who wishes to make a motion?
I'd be happy to make a motion to approve it as requested, but I agree with the condition that, you know, any further expansion of the footprint, I think, would be inappropriate. If they wanna go up, that's one thing, but, and then it's a health department question, I think, but, but, yeah, I think, as you said, the footprint does already encroach on one side as it is, this is given an extra, but I would, I would think that condition might be reasonable, if it makes sense.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Tim seconds it? Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
That carries five in favor, none against. Steve, as you're aware, once the decision is drafted, it will be clocked with the town clerk, 20 days then must elapse, technical waiting period, and after that, you can come into our office, pick up your special permit, take it over to the registry of deeds and record it, and bring a copy back for our records. Do you have any questions?
No, none at all, just wanna say thank you to the board, we appreciate your consideration.
Sean.
Go to the Kings.
Sean, we need to withdraw the variance without prejudice?
Yes, you asked for variance relief in the alternative, Steve?
Yes, yes, we did.
We asked that you request to withdraw that without prejudice?
Request to withdraw without prejudice.
So moved, so moved.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The, the request to withdraw the variance without prejudice is granted. Thank you, Steve. Have a nice night.
Very much. Have a great night. Thank you. The Kings certainly appreciate it.
All right, the next matter on our petition is petition number five one zero nine, which is continued from five nine twenty-four. This is D.C. Solar Inc. and Sunwell. Property location is two oh five Old Main Street, South Yamam, Mass. It's in an IRS forty zoning district, and the applicant seeks a special permit per section three oh one point two and/or variance from three oh one point four point six. To modify the existing parking lot by removing in-lot trees to construction of a one hundred foot eight inch by one hundred and seventeen foot six inch solar carport canopy over the rear parking lot. Is the petition a present?
Yes. Yes.
Good evening. Could you identify yourself directly, please?
Dan Clinton with D.C. Solar. And before we go any farther, we have two people that are trying to sign in online, but they're not able to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can we bring them up, Lisa?
Yeah, we're getting Dave to take a look. Let them in.
Okay. Do you need them right now to proceed?
Uh, no. I don't think so.
Okay. Why don't you, why don't you proceed?
We have several people that are signed in, but we don't know which ones are trying to actually...
Yeah, Tessa, and I forget the gentleman's name. They're both from Sunwell.
I'm not sure if it says that.
Can you look at the list over there and...
Randy. Tessa and Randy.
Tessa and Randy? Tessa, Tessa and Randy.
It would be Charlie. Sorry about that.
Sorry, Charlie.
I was fooled.
Charlie.
Oh, Charlie.
Thank you.
Is there a Char?
Sorry. That's okay. He's trying.
Right, thanks, folks.
Okay, we have everybody we need?
Think so.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and proceed and tell us something about your petition?
So we are trying to, we've applied for a permit to build a solar canopy over the back parking lot of the church. It's about, it's set back about five hundred feet from the road, behind trees, and to the side of the church at the back. It's about five hundred solar panels, covered parking lot. The low edge is gonna be about seventeen feet tall. No, I'm sorry, fourteen feet tall, and the high edge is about twenty-two feet. Really no disturbance to the parking lot at all, but the current plan shows it covering the areas where there's trees in the medians. And so when we went to the planning board, they said zoning would have to approve a special permit or a variance, the way it's, you know, drawn now, so.
Did you go to site plan review?
Yes. Yeah, and they directed us here, so.
They directed you here?
Correct.
Did you go through full, do we have a site plan review comment sheet?
No. No.
So you didn't go through site plan review? They just said you don't come to us and go, is that correct?
We, we went to a site plan review meeting, and they, Dolores told me we need to fill out an application to come to this meeting to request either a variance or a special
Normally, what you do is you go to site plan review, although maybe what you are, what you've requested actually... Okay. First off, in my packet, I don't know if anybody else listening this, but I don't have the actual structures themselves, the plan. Could you submit those?
I don't either.
No, just have a...
We just have a, we just have a, yeah, we just have the, the layout, the site plan.
I agree. There's no, nothing relevant to the structures and how they look, and no landscape plan, you know, what trees are coming down, other any trees going up, et cetera, et cetera.
Right now, currently, there's no change to the landscaping. There's four small shrub trees that would be impacted by it. They potentially could remain.
No, but one of the things we're gonna want is a landscape plan.
Well, I think we might want a little more than that, but...
I also, I also printed a full electrical set of drawings, six copies, full structural drawing, six copies, and hand-delivered them here with the application to Dolores.
Okay.
I also brought a set with me tonight.
So I'm looking.
Okay, well, all right, so let me just take a look at your application, because there's a few things going on with this particular petition. Now, you're seeking a special permit under three oh one point two. This has to do with off-street parking requirements.
So I think we were steered...
This doesn't have, this doesn't have to do with a solar array.
We were steered towards that, I think, by the building commissioner, because we're seeking to make alterations to a parking lot, is what...
Yeah, really, the only relief that you're really looking for tonight is to take down, as your petition asks, is to remove in-lot trees for the construction of this solar carport. So it appears to me that the way it's worded is you're just asking to take down in-lot trees. I'm not quite sure that you've asked for, to construct, the wording of your request.
I'm gonna...
Now, I think you need a special permit to construct the solar array as well. Is that what you were asking? I think that's what you're asking for. The reason I think this should go to site plan review is because there are a number of departments that may wanna chime in on this. For one, you have this parking right here. I'll take one as that's the fire department. Whether they can get their fire apparatus in there. Building department, whether you conform to what would be, what you're doing to the parking lot might trigger a full upgrade of the parking requirements under three oh one, which would require paving. Your, your in-lot trees would be some of them. We'd wanna see drainage, things of that nature. The building department would tell us what, if any, building relief that you need. Did you go to any other departments beside the zoning board of appeals before you came here?
I wanna be really clear about this. There was a scheduled plan review meeting that I attended. Lisa was there as well. There was the building commissioner. Historic was there. It was upstairs in the meeting room. It was a scheduled meeting by this town. I attended it myself. We went before them. We showed them all the drawings. They said we really don't see anything wrong with it. The fire commissioner was there as well. He asked that it would be a certain height off the ground so the trucks could get underneath it. This is all recorded at, at the town.
Right. No, I, I understand. No, that's, that's site plan review, but there should be a document that's generated that we review for scrutinizing.
From, from me or from your town?
Oh, I, I'm certainly not blaming you right now. If you tell me you went to site plan review, I think we should have that in our packet.
But Sean, also...
What I think we might wanna do with this is, we might wanna continue this matter, because I don't think we have enough in our packets. Do you have a lighting plan?
Yes, it's in the electrical drawings, which were provided.
We don't have them.
I mean, I have them all right here.
Oh, we can't, but, but Sean, we need, we need, we need pictures of the structures, how high, setbacks, all that.
Yeah. Hold, hold on just a second, Jack. Okay, a light, are you planning on any lights with this?
Yes, underneath the canopy, there's several lights that are designed by the electrical engineer to illuminate the property.
And do you have a plan that shows none of those are going to encroach on others, other properties?
It, it doesn't specifically show the extent of the lighting, you know, how far it'll reach, but I'm sure we could get that.
You're gonna need it.
Well, what you're, what you're talking about proposing to build here is a pretty substantial structure, and we really don't have really any information on this at all. Now, this, this may not be your fault, all your fault, or maybe none of it's your fault, but I, I don't think that we have enough information in front of us to consider this petition. At least I don't. I'd like to see an actual layout of the, I'd like to see a picture of these solar panels. I'd like to see the elevations. I'd like to see where exactly they're gonna be located, how tall they are, how wide they are. I mean, you have a drawing on this plan I see right here. I presume it's your representation, then it'll take up all of it.
Is it a single structure, or is it multiple structures?
One single structure. One single structure. It's called a long span, so two rows of columns supporting long top beams.
Yeah, we definitely see that stuff.
I mean, it's a little frustrating that the, the material didn't get to you guys. I mean, it was hand-delivered a month ago.
Well, let, let me just look at something else here. Three oh one point six, parking lots, shelter. So they said that you need a, a variance from three oh one point four point six.
I believe that was what they said at the time. It's not right in front of me.
Sean, aren't they gonna also need a use change of some kind? I mean, it's more than just a parking lot now.
No, this is a, this would be commercial slash industrial structures, which would be in a residential zoning district. In my opinion, I don't think you can do this by special permit. I think you need a variance to construct these.
Oh, I agree. I agree.
You haven't asked for that. I think what I would recommend that you do is, first off, is go back and find out if, and we'll do some investigating as well, where or if there was a site plan review comment sheet that was generated relating to this petition, because we really need something. And secondly, you know, all the relief that you need here, if you read the history of this property right here, we actually gave relief on this property to create this parking lot and not require them to bring it up to the zoning standards relative. This should've been paved, should've had, should've had lighting, should've had the in-lot trees, which I guess you had. There's no spaces that are delineated. There's no drainage. I mean, back in two thousand and two, we gave relief from the requirements to upgrade this parking facility. Now, that's not happening. It's gonna remain dirt or gravel, and you wanna put a big solar array on top of it, which, me, to me, there's gotta be more to this request than what we have in front of us right now.
Sean, shouldn't there also be something from the church saying that they want this or agree to it?
Well, we're just gonna presume that they, they, their representation is...
They signed the petition.
The church wants this. Yeah, we're, 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 we're gonna go on that presumption right now. We, I don't know that we even have any. We should have, by the way, some paperwork from the church authorizing you to construct this as well. So you may wanna go back to the church and just ask them for a document, but it should be a full package. I will tell you that I do have some concerns about allowing such structures, commercial and industrial, in not only a residential district, but what I consider to be in many, be a historical district. And whether the allowance of that would be keeping with the neighborhood and would not represent a substantial detriment to the neighborhood. I think in my opinion it would. I don't know how others feel on that, and I'll let them chime in. Okay, maybe we should take a poll of the board and see what the feeling is on this before you go forward, but you're certainly entitled to do that. But I think I would, at the very least, like some further information on this. So if you wanna continue this matter, I'd be more than happy to recommend to the board that we allow continuance.
I would just recommend, too, that he, just Sean, that he meets with the building commissioner and try to go through this and the structures, et cetera. Find out what he needs.
I've met with him three times in this building, so.
And, and...
And Dolores.
And it's the, their determination that all you need is just...
So we can go back to the bylaws and try to clear up exactly what we're, you know, asking for here. At the plan review meeting, they said it would need to go to zoning, and we were asking for a special permit because it was gonna affect the in-lot trees. The parking lot currently is already, has lighting, and I think some drainage. There was discussions about it not being paved, and that potentially could be an issue here, but...
But it's also a residential community. I'd be very uncomfortable with anything you have here. I can tell you right now, I couldn't support what you're asking for.
Okay.
I would, I would say another, I, I'm feeling the same way. I mean, we can poll the board right now to see what the feeling of the board is on your request for relief here.
Briefly, I just wanted to know if Tessa or Charlie had anything to say. I'm actually, we're just the contractor that's gonna build the structure, so we actually...
And who are these other folks?
They're, they're the development company who actually has the interconnection agreement with Eversource and has the communication with the church. So we're, we're just the permit applicant, you know, applicant, so I'd like to hear from them before we poll or, you know, move on.
That's fine. Go ahead. Tessa, go ahead. Please identify yourself.
Sure. My name is Tessa. I'm a project developer for Sunwell. We own and operate projects like the one that we proposed at St. David's or two oh five Old Main Street. On the suggestion around the continuance, we'd be happy to gather more materials, you know, kinda do some fact-finding, come back to the board for further discussion. But, yeah, I'll pause there. Charlie, would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure. Hi, folks. Thanks for having us. My name is Charlie Gould. I am Sunwell's general counsel, and I think the only thing I would like some clarity on, kinda before we outline next steps with the board here, is there seems to be a little bit of confusion about who to go to first and, and what to obtain. And as Tessa mentioned, we're more than happy to work with the board and gather all information requested and provide what we, you know, humanly possible can. But before we go through that exercise, it would be good to know if we need another meeting with building, you know, if we need that site plan review doc before we come back to the board. Just mechanically and from a sequencing perspective, it'd be great to have some, some guidance and clarity there. So, you know, happy to answer any questions, you know, appreciate your consideration.
I mean, I'm just looking at these sections of the bylaw and I'm just trying to figure out how special permit relief, I mean, it's, it, to me, this just seems a little bit too simple, that you're just coming here and saying, we just want relief to remove the in-lot trees, we want a special permit. You could be silent on the, on your solar array. That's all you're asking for. Now-
Right.
You're, what you're really asking for though is to construct a quite large solar array in a residential district is what you're asking for, and so what we need to determine is whether that structure and/or use, 'cause it's a commercial or industrial use, 'cause all you're gonna do is you're gonna take the power and you're gonna sell the power, correct? What are you gonna do with the power?
Yeah, the power is going to be sold back to the church at a discount.
Yeah, are you gonna sell the po, are you gonna generate more power than the church needs?
Uh, Tessa might have a little more information on that, um, typically, if there's any exporting, it, it's minimal, we try to size these things so that the church can get what they need, get the discount, um, but, uh, Tessa, do you, do you know if there's any exporting here and if the, the percentage?
I can jump in, um, so this project is going to be configured, configured as a low-income community solar project, so what we propose to the church is they would be, quote-unquote, anchor-off takers, so they'd be the main customer for the project buying a majority of the solar, um, that's coming from the site, and then the other, um, 50% would be going to, um, low-income customers at a discount in the U-.
So, so you're gonna sell, so the needs of the church represent 50% of what you're going to produce, the other 50% will be sold off, so what you're telling us is that you're gonna be running a commercial power plant in a residential neighborhood, is that fair to say?
It's going to community, low-income community, doesn't it?
Well, no, I, I appreciate what you're doing with it, and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to be smart here, but I mean, I'm just trying to be realistic. You know, if you were up off White's path, I don't think we'd be having this discussion if you were doing this in a B3 or even a B2 zoning district, but you're doing it in an RS40 district, and what you wanna do is you wanna have a power plant where you wanna produce enough power to sell back to the church at a discount or however you provide it to them, and then you wanna take the balance of it and you wanna give it to others, so you're actually running a business. First off, you're not in a business district, you're in a residential district, so it wouldn't matter if you were selling cotton candy, okay? It's a, it's a commercial business. Secondly, you're asking to construct, uh, structures that are not in keeping with the surrounding zoning district, and I think one could easily make the argument that this would be representing nuisance hazard or congestion, I think that would certainly be substantially more detrimental, and I, I, I personally just don't see myself voting to approve this, and that's why I wanted to poll the board before your group went back and started running around and getting all this information. Now, it may be true, what you're looking for zoning purposes is just to take a few trees out, we've had people come and ask for that, but not to just say, uh, we're gonna do that and grant us relief, and oh, by the way, we're gonna put a big solar array out. So, um, I would like to poll the board to see if they're in agreement with, uh, what I've said. Jay?
Um, complete agreement, I think, uh, there's just a lot more to this than what's been submitted and requested, so, um, I'm not comfortable with what's been presented so far.
Dick?
Yeah, I think it's a, you know, incomplete application for starters, um, agreeing with you with what, what's missing here, there's usually other plans and other things that we can see that makes some sense, like we said, the design of the building, uh, landscape plans, driveway plans, parking, drainage, et cetera, which are not here, uh, but more importantly, uh, it's, uh, the main problem here is, I mean, they're trying to build a structure which is huge, over 100 by over 100, um, a single structure, which is gonna be out of keeping with the residential character of that neighborhood, and, uh, even, uh, uh, even with some of the other things done, I just don't think it's, it, it's appropriate, it's gonna show up into, other people will be able to view it and see it, and it's, uh, you know, we don't know how it's gonna look, but I have a feeling it won't look too good, and, uh, so I've got some, some of your issues with it.
Okay. Barbara?
Um, I agree completely with the comments, um, that both Jay and, um, Dick, um, have spoken about, so, yeah, I, I don't think there's enough information here at all, but, um, I don't, I just don't think I'd like the look of it either.
Kim?
I'm in agreement with the rest of the board.
I, I would think, go ahead. No, no, go ahead, finish your thought.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think some of the concerns might be, um, alleviated with, with the additional documentation, that it, it sounds like it didn't make it to everyone, um, you know, including photos, um, and, um, and pictures of the structure, you know, or at least proposed to be built structure, right? Um, and I think, uh, it seems like the, the board is, is significantly concerned with the, the appearance of it and, and how it looked within the neighborhood, um, you know, it, it's my understanding that this is gonna be completely covered by trees and, and practically, um, invisible to the, the streets and the other lots, um, but again, I think, uh, you know, were we to pursue this, it would be, um, very helpful, uh, if you could provide some guidance on next steps so we can evaluate, uh, what to do, um, which would make sense sequentially, right? Um, on one hand, as you mentioned, uh, Mr. Uore, uh, we were simply coming before the board tonight because we were under the impression that all we needed was, um, a variance to take down four rather small shrubs, shrub-like trees, um, but it sounds like that's not the case, uh, so, you know, again, maybe if you could provide a little bit of guidance on, on the next steps and what departments to hit first, we can better evaluate, um, how to proceed.
Well, I think the guidance that the board is giving you, I won't speak for all, but if this board were to take a vote tonight, you would need at least four out of five to be successful. You've already heard at least two of us, and I would probably venture to guess more, that are not in support of these solar arrays being placed in a residential neighborhood. So if you wanna go back, I would suggest that you go back to the building commissioner and ask him exactly what you need for relief, to come before this board, and then put a full packet together, including pictures and diagrams, uh, and elevations, including plot plans where all of this is gonna be located, including any transformers that you need on site, where they're gonna be located, all right? And you can come back and we'll give you another date, but, um, I would suggest that I don't think you're going to be successful when you come back, but if you wish to do that, I would say go back to the building department, because we don't walk people through how to get their, how to fill out their applications, that's not our department. We look at requests for zoning relief, we apply the bylaw, and then we take a vote, whether you meet the criteria for special permit, whether you meet the criteria for variance, that's what we decide. Other than that, we, we don't give out, you know, info, we don't give out instruction on how to apply for these things. So you really need to go back to the building department and, uh, see what they have to say, and then if you'd like, we'll schedule you for another hearing. If not, we would also allow you to withdraw your application without prejudice tonight.
Understood, uh, appreciate, uh, appreciate the thoughts and, uh, the opportunity here tonight. Um, I'll defer to my colleague on the matter of, do we just pick another date, um, or do we withdraw with, without prejudice? Um, Sean, i-if we were to pick another date, could we pick one in, you know, not the next meeting, but several meetings out to allow us to evaluate a little further based on what we've heard today, or would it have to be the very next meeting?
It, it probably wouldn't be the very next meeting, you'd need to sign an extension agreement that then would be good for 100 days, but we'd be scheduling you within that timeframe. We don't mind doing that, if that's your choice, I mean, it, it is true, you came here tonight, you don't have a, a complete packet, but I, I don't think you should be under an illusion that by giving us a full packet, it's going to somehow change the board, at least not two out of five. I don't wanna speak for the other three, but there's, there's two of us that are not going to vote for this petition, and I'm gonna have the other three feel if they wanna give more guidance to you as to whether they would support it.
I'm of an agreement with you, sorry.
I can, um, I can say that I think, I think we'll go back to the building commissioner, um, clarify what next steps are, um, you know, we were told one thing, and so just clarifying what is the reality of progress, um, and then at that time, I think we'll make a decision.
Okay, so why don't we do this? Lisa?
Yes?
Let's give them another date. What do we have in, uh?
How much, how much time do they think they want, Sean? Do they want 30 days, 60 days?
How much, well, what, what, Lisa, what do we have for meetings in June?
Um, there's one slot available on June 13th, and there's-
After that.
After that, on the, the 27th, there's only one application so far.
How about June 27th? Is that okay with you guys?
Yeah, that'd be fine, thank you, that's, gives us enough time to fully evaluate.
Okay. All right, why don't we do, uh, why don't we do June 27th for the next meeting? We'll continue it until then, we'll need, uh, I believe his name is Dan, we're gonna need him to sign a, uh, an extension agreement, Lisa's got one of those, you can just, uh, you can sign that, and then you can, uh, go do your due diligence, and we'll see you back here on that day.
Sounds good, appreciate your time.
We, uh, before you go, do we have a, a motion by one of the board members for, to continue this matter?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to continue this to the June 27th meeting.
I'll second.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. We'll see you back here on June 27th, please don't forget to sign that extension agreement before you leave.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, good night now.
Thank you, folks.
All right, um, Sean, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from April 25th.
Have a second to that?
Second.
All those in favor? Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Those minutes are, uh, approved. Any other business? Hearing none. We have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a second to that?
Second.
Do we need to have any discussion on this? Hearing none, okay, that is, uh, that is, we, that is allowed or approved, okay.
I'd just like to apologize to the board for, uh-
That's okay, Dick, those technical glitches, they're tough online, trust me, I know-
I know, especially set and ready-